So we will reconvene the business meeting at 7:37 PM. Do I need a motion for that? Oh, okay.
I move.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, we did the pledge already. So I'll go straight into item 1.1, the president's report. So this week under the president's report, I'd just like to share that we've had elementary open houses last Wednesday, September 10th, and we brought back sort of like the tradition that kind of went away with COVID of board members going to the open houses to welcome back the families. And I think it was great, and there was a lot of, lot of families there. We have the middle school open house tomorrow night coming up, 5:00 PM and at 7:00 PM. And then next week on Thursday, we have the high school open house and the ninth grade parent meeting at 6:00 PM. And then the rest of Greeley, 10 through 12, at 7:00 PM. Is that right? Also would like to thank Mr. Mario Martinez, our director of facilities, and Mr. Joshua Kowalblock, our assistant superintendent of business for working around the clock to make sure that our capital projects are being completed and on time and getting done properly. I think there's a lot of things that you could see, that people can see while they're on campus that's been happening, but there are a lot of things that's been done that people may not necessarily see. If Josh, you could just kind of go over some of the things. I wanted to highlight it, but I think Josh could do a better job.
So we have completed the large portion of the three hundred dollar project on Friday. Started with the district-wide network upgrades and like county block throughout the school district and roof projects at all school districts, both at all buildings, which were completed about a year ago. The next phase was doing all of the HVAC at the elementary school, adding air conditioning to the tables and the cafeterias, as well as doing some classroom HVAC upgrades at Forest Grove, which are now complete. Then we have reconstructed the J Bridge, which is very exciting. We have put new lights on the tennis courts at Greeley. We have completed the athletic pavilion at Greeley. We've upgraded the sound system in the Greeley auditorium. We have added air conditioning to Greeley L Building, the Greeley gyms in the cafeteria, added air conditioning to the Bell gym in cafeteria, and added air conditioning to the Seven Bridges gym. That is all, there's just some punchless items on all of those to be done. Every construction company has a checklist and they just need to complete that, and then those projects will be complete. And then the next round of projects, the final round, are installing an additional ball field at Seven Bridges, which will get started in about November, just after the fall seasons, doing work on the lighting in the Greeley auditorium, and some additional roofwork at Grafflin, and that will tie up the entire project.
Amazing. And the athletic pavilion is also AKA the snack shack, right? And that's going to be ready for us by Friday?
It is open now, but Josh is talking about potentially having a ribbing cutting ceremony. If you want to be there. Bathrooms are in use.
And the bathrooms are currently in use, that's the most important part.
Okay. So are we doing the ribbon cutting in front of the bathroom or in front of the snack shack? Okay, thank you. Next, I'd like Melissa to update us on the board officers orientation that was hosted by WPSBA that we attended together last week.
Sure. Kaylee and I both went to the board officer orientation that the Westchester Putnam School Board Association, we call them WestPUTT. They had for all new board officers across all the different school districts. So it was just a way for us to go and meet with other executive teams from other districts, compare notes, talk about strategies for leading effective school boards, tools for fostering trust and strong board teams. And then there was guidance on key relationships, communication norms and protocols. So there were key speakers who had been, you know, board presidents for years and years and just talked about their best practices for how they handle things for the boards. And it was really helpful just to have that meet and greet and share questions and talk about strategies. And they have two more sessions this year that Kaylee and I will go do if our schedule allows, and it will be along these same lines. So we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, and I think it was, it was a great learning opportunity for us, and it's nice to be there together as president and vice president, because then you get to see all the other presidents and vice president across the region and just talking about what works for them, what hasn't, what are some issues. So it's, it was a great learning opportunity. I had the pleasure of being at the roundtable discussions, which was also hosted by WestPUTT this past Monday, and it was, you know, with board members and superintendents from around the region and discussing issues such as the new New York State portrait of a graduate and its changing curriculum and assessments. And we also had some student board members at our table joining in on all of these conversations in different topics. And one of my tables, we were just talking about student board members. I was supposed to meet Matthew there, I think he went for the training and then he had to leave because of his schedule, but I got to meet some great student board members from different districts in the region and just talked about, how's it going? How's it going? There's, there are districts that are just starting for the first time, like us, having a student ex-official board member, and there are, because it's mandated, but there are districts who have had student board members on their boards for several years already. They've been doing, doing it. So again, nice conversations, learning, lots of questions, questions to bring back to our board, to our district. And the other thing that I want to highlight is that the student from the Southern Westchester Boses, their culinary arts program prepared a three-course meal for this evening, and they were doing table service like it was restaurant style, and so they were all waiting on us, pouring water, and it was really incredible. And I, it was just very impressive. The food was good, too. You know, I don't really like sweet things, but even their dessert was pretty good. So that's their CT, career technical education program, and we know that we have access to that as well. So I, I've never been to one like that, and so it was, it was very impressive. And next, I have an something that I would like to share with the community. And this is something that you'll see as we go into the meeting further, but I'm going to make a statement about it now. Tonight's resolution and documents before the board brings to an end years of litigation and the sale of the district's 20-plus acre property known as the Button Hook property to the Friends of Button Hook. The original plan was to sell the property to CG Homes subdivided into six lots, but the government approvals became unattainable based primarily on Department of Environmental Protection's requirements. There are currently cases pending in Westchester County Supreme Court brought by CG Homes and the Friends, as well as appeals filed by the district and CG Homes in the appellate division of the New York State Supreme Court. The settlement agreement calls for all litigation to be withdrawn and for the Friends of Button Hook to pay $1,175,000, including $1,050,000 to the district and to have $125,000 paid to CG Homes. The sale of the property to the Friends will be consummated during the next six months. That is all I'm going to say about that for now. And that is the end of my report. Thank you. Do you want to pull up the? Oh, I need to do the 1.1.1. Yes, thank you. So can I have a motion to move item 1.1.1? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints board member chairs to the following committees of the whole for the 2025-26 school year?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have here Audit Committee, Matt Auerbach, which we appointed on 7/1/25; Communications Committee, Alyssa Dorfman; Facilities Committee, Kaylee Huang; Health and Safety Committee, Kaylee Huang; Policy Committee, Kaylee Huang; and Wellness Committee, Alyssa Dorfman. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and 1.1.2, Matthew?
Thank you so much. So this, in the past couple of weeks, I've been gaining a lot of information on our students here in Chappaqua, and specifically I met with all five, I met with Dr. Seppi separately, our my high school principal, but I met with the other five building principals last Friday, was it? And I just got some information on what's been going on at their schools in order to present tonight. And so in the future, I'll be meeting with their student governments to hear directly from students, but because those are not formed yet, I met with the, I've met with the building principals instead. And so to start off, we have the elementary schools, and we have some successful town meetings at Roaringbrook and Douglas Grafflin, which I believe just constitute of the meeting, of meetings between the administration and teachers and all the students that happen from time to time. And they've been very successful. Student government advisors from all, from all schools are planning collaborating together so that all, so that all elementary school students have similar experiences during, at their student government clubs. And then a number of clubs for elementary schools or co-curriculars are expanding with increased student interest. So giving from Grafflin is continuing from last year, the Roaringbrook Service Club, and then the West Orchard Play Club, which has, which was at Grafflin and Roaringbrook, I think, I believe, last year, and it has been transferred to West Orchard this year. And so then a, a big addition this year has been the world language program, and what, from what I've heard, it's been really successful. I believe all schools have had the opportunity to begin their world language learning so far, and I look forward to hearing more about that in the future. And another new thing that has, that was established in our district this year was the new student program, and then, and our new student program coordinator, new student program coordinators and student ambassadors began working with our new students in the past couple of weeks, which is really exciting. And then finally, Ms. Wilson shared that Roaringbrook has planted 30 seeds in the new hydroponics room, which seemed to be very exciting and looking forward to going over there and seeing them. And so for the middle schools, we have the new TSP programming, which is at Bell Middle School, and Mr. Curtis has said that that has been very successful. And as per usual, in our fall season, we have modified sports and they've begun and are successful as usual. We have Spirit Week for homecoming. This year it is aligned with the high school, student government and high school Spirit Week, so fostering some more community within the district between schools. And in addition to the elementary schools, we have our student clubs starting next week. And like Kaylee mentioned, we have open house tomorrow on September 18 at 5:00 PM and 7:00. At the high school, we had the club fair, which is always a very, very, very big event for all of our high school students, specifically for our freshmen, just experiencing the club fair for the first time, getting, getting some information on what clubs look like at Greeley, what clubs are offered to them. There are over 100 clubs at Greeley, there were so, so, so many posters that were showcased, and it was really, really great to see. I got a couple of pictures, the Greeley Voice specifically, just to plug, I'm in the club, is the school newspaper, and we're really looking forward to that. And then we've had several senior events, such as Senior Sunrise, and the Senior Musical was picked by our students. It was, High School Musical was selected, which is very exciting. And we have had Homecoming Week all of this week, continuing into tomorrow and Friday, and then our Homecoming Football Game on Friday, on Friday night, in addition to all of our other homecoming games that have happened this week. And then, of course, we have Open House next week at 7:00 PM. And then I just wanted to give a quick update on, I believe it's Policy 5031 that has been introduced this year in Chappaqua in accordance with the New York State Belt to Belt phone ban, New York State Belt to Belt phone ban. And from what I've seen and what I've heard from administration and teachers and peers, students are overall acclimating to the new rule, they're following rules and directions within classrooms. Teachers have the option to use the term that's coined as the cellphone hotel in their classrooms. Personally, only two of my teachers use it, and in other classes, we keep our phones in our backpacks. And that has seemed to be what worked pretty well during class time. For common areas like the cafeteria, the library, the hallways, it's still a little bit hard, specifically for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, just because they're so used to using their phones or just quickly checking the time or their schedule or, you know, scrolling during these times. So those, that, the expectations are continuing to be reinforced about the restriction of cellphones used in those spaces. And then I just wanted to share some things that I've been up to. So like Kaylee and Alyssa, I also attended the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association new student board member training. It was really, really informative, I really enjoyed it. I got to hear from a superintendent, from the superintendent of the Hastings on Hudson School District and several seasoned board members, that was really successful. I also would just like to extend my gratitude to all of you, the administration, and especially Dr. Ackerman and my fellow board members, for integrating me so well into this board and just being so open to my ideas and, you know, just giving me all this, all this support during this, for me in this new role. And so just compared to other districts, some students were struggling with what, with what they, the position that they were given, and, and just, they weren't necessarily receiving the support that they had expected to. And so hopefully that will improve for everybody else, but I'm really lucky to be a student board member for Chappaqua. And then just, just this morning, I had a Zoom with the New York State School Boards Association where it brought all the student board members from across the state, not just Westchester, together on a Zoom, on a Zoom meeting where we heard from several very important people throughout New York State, specifically the Commissioner of New York State Education, Dr. Betty Rose, I believe is her name, and the Executive Director of NISBA overall. And then just one last thing, I, I haven't been able to get to Grafflin and Roaringbrook yet, but I was able to go back to West Orchard to introduce myself to all the students and teachers, and it was just really amazing and just heartwarming for me as a previous West Orchard student to go back and see everybody again, and it was very nice. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I did forget to talk about homecoming, which, thank you for doing that. And I did want to share. Nobody talked about this, so I did, I don't know if you guys saw me walk in with this, but this is my way of showing my spirit of, today is, what is it called again?
Anything but a backpack.
Anything but a backpack day. So I put all of my items that I needed to bring to my meetings today in my little laundry basket here. It's not my shower caddy. And tomorrow is tie dye, tie dye day? So I think everyone should get into the spirit. Yes. Thank you, Matthew. So before we move into the performance presentation, I just would like to highlight a few things on the agenda. So we have a donation. So Josh, would you like to share the softball field donation that's been facilitated through Matt Auerbach? So it's, it's a great opportunity for us to make some adjustments to that.
I mean, first, Debbie Ospat called me Matt Auerbacker. I don't know what you just called me.
Send it there. Matt, Matt over here. Sorry, Auerbach.
So our youth baseball league is donating both clay and services to rehabilitate the Bell School baseball field, the one by the parking lot. So we're going to be building up some clay there, cleaning up the infield. As we know, that there is lots of times during the year, there are puddles in the clay, and this rehabilitation should make it more usable on more days of the year, and just make it so our teens can use it as often as possible.
And for my personal use as well.
Oh. Okay, so I did want to share, thank you, Josh. We have two additional coaches for your consideration on the agenda tonight. We had a huge enrollment in our academic teams, specifically debate and Science Olympiad, and so we wanted to increase opportunities for students and also, you know, support supervision, particularly in debates. So with the addition of these coaches, provided we can secure them, we'd be able to like increase our Science Olympiad teams and be able to support everyone who would like to participate. Now, is that registration or is that over? That you can't join anymore?
Right. It's, well, I mean, Science Olympiad has a process to be a part of the team, the others do not. So if students wanted to be a part of robotics debate and academic challenge, they should just go see their assistant principal and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
And then on the agenda tonight, we have a few of our shared clubs for our middle school students that will be taking place at Forest Greeley High School. So we have, we're excited to be able to offer some of these opportunities for students. You can see which day of the week that we are planning to house these clubs up here. And next week, we'll be sharing with our parents and with our students how to register for these clubs if students want to come up here, as well as participate in our tutoring program. And so I'm really excited about this opportunity for our kids. And then we also, I wanted to share with you, we opened up our continuing education classes today for fifth and sixth grade. The Chef Academy sold out in like three minutes, and so we're looking to see if we can have more days where we can offer that programming for our students. We're starting small, this is our first attempt at supporting like a continuing ed type model up here for our middle schools, part of the strategic plan. Josh, did the other two classes close?
The other two classes, I think, have two or three spaces left.
So you better register.
Like now, yeah.
So this is great. This is, this is for the fall. So now that we've kind of gone through this process, we'll get through the first round of courses, and then we'll connect with each other again and see what makes sense to offer in the winter.
And Christine, are we, we're bussing the kids up here from the, to the middle schools?
Yes, we're bussing them up here from the middle schools, and then they're taking home the high school activity buses.
Oh, they're getting bussed home, too?
Yeah. We don't have, we don't have many students go on the 410 bus up here really, so this is, this is going to work out nicely, I think. Okay, so then I also wanted to share with you, as you know, last year, for those who were on the board and those who were at the meeting, we agreed to participate in regionalization conversations. So we have four, and these are the school districts that are a part of these conversations. It's almost all of us in Putnam Northern Westchester Boses, okay? So we participated in multiple discussions, and so we have four areas that we're working on collaborating in to increase our services and reduce our costs. The first is we're working together to create a regional behavioral health support network through some shared services, specifically targeting students K through seven. And we're looking at expanding opportunities for students to participate in like partial day programs and, and try to like create some type of mobile crisis support. So we're going to be like planning on working together to figure out the best way that we can do that regionally, and then asking the state to consider funding a portion of that. We're also looking at working together to support our pre-K students, specifically our students that need preschool services, because many of us expressed difficulty with our parents and their children receiving services due to lack of providers. We also are looking to kind of have a transportation hub to coordinate services for students that have to leave the district for a variety of reasons, to see if we can share costs and share busing. It'll save us a significant amount of money. And then the last thing we're looking at is working together to increase internship opportunities and workplace learning opportunities for students, and some of our children have that act as a part of their program. And so these are the four areas that we're going to work on together that we've committed to, but we're not, this is a commitment for us, like I have to, in the state portal, indicate that we're going to be working on this with our team, but we wouldn't be expending any money without board approval. I'm just kind of sharing with you, this is where we are in our process. And then the, we're, we're talking about, even though we're not actively working on four other areas that we feel like we all are demonstrating a need. And again, it continues to center on like pre-K and CSEs, and you can kind of see a long list of things that we're concerned about, that we feel like we could work together to help advocate for some changes in the law to help support students better. We're, we're also talking about different ways to support students who come in to our district that are 17, 18, and they are ENL students, maybe collaborating on a central location where students can receive support between 18 and 22 in learning English, but also maybe seeking a GED or equivalency, because it's hard for students to come in here at that age and then move through the program and receive a region supplement. So we're working on that. We're continuing to work on ways to to share costs and reduce costs associated with school security, including the school resource officers. And then we're having difficulty, many of us due to the teacher shortage, hiring leave replacements and subs when we need them. Not, not that we haven't had problems hiring staff that we need probationary, but when staff go out unexpectedly, it's difficult for us to, at times, buying temporary leave replacements who are certified. So we're, we're going to be working on that together to, to potentially have this as an area of focus for us. So those are the things that we're talking about, and I just wanted to present that probably for the board. And then, you know, we have a lot coming up, homecoming, open house, we have our fall gathering with the PTA here on Friday, we have school close next week, and, and so, and then we have our high school open house. We tried to move our open houses earlier this year, not into October, because we thought that would be better for families. So that's why the schedule shifted a little bit forward in September. And that is the end of the superintendent report, so I want to hand it over to Adam, who will do the assessment report.
The report that everyone's been waiting for, 400 slides of data for your consideration. So this is, this is, right, only bested by the budget reports that come later in the year.
You want, is that the end or throughout?
Yeah, I was going to mention, I figured I'd pause at like the breaks after the different sections, and then, and you know, if there's a slide that you really want to, you know, ask questions, certainly jump in, but I was thinking I'd pause it, you know, between the different sections, and then we could have some discussion, answer any questions that you have. And I did receive a few questions ahead of time, which I appreciate, I'll try to answer some of those as I go, but as things come up, certainly, you could ask those. So the annual assessment report is actually a requirement of New York State that we report New York State data, and we have some other assessments that we typically report on. And over the years, this report has evolved a little bit based on what the board has asked to see, and we've added some data and some slides. And we've also tried to align it to our strategic plan and priorities and areas of interest. So if there ever is additional data that you'd like to see, we'd be happy to share that. So let me jump in here with the organization of the overall report. We're going to go through the NWEA MAP scores, the state scores in three through eight. We give the ELA a math assessment from New York State in grades three through eight, as well as the fifth grade science assessment. We're going to go through some regions exam data, advanced placement exam data, ACT and SAT scores, and then I have some other things in there as well as like college matriculation and things like that. So that's the general organization. We're going to start with NWEA MAPs. The MAPs assessment, it's important to note that this is an adaptive assessment. It actually gets like more challenging as the student is more able and learns more things, and the questions will vary, different students will get different questions. It picks up where the student left off, so it tries to identify what they know in both ELA and math in several subcategories, and then we produce these reports for parents. I know many of our parents have seen these. This is the overall district data. We're going to start with ELA. So what this is showing us is the overall mean scores on the MAPs. The MAPs use a kind of proprietary RIT score system, which is just, it's like specific to NWEA, which in themselves don't mean a lot, but they do also share with us normed scores. You can see these two lines, the fall norms and the spring norms. So we have a sense of how our students here compare to this kind of nationally normed group of a few million students. So it gives us a comparison. The power of this assessment for us and for parents is that we can track individual student growth over time, and students will, we can get a, like reading levels and math scores over time for a student, even if they're reading or doing math above or below grade level, which is a little different than a state assessment. I'll talk more about that when we get to state assessments. So you can see that, that typical shape, students will, they grow pretty significantly in the younger years. That's also reflected in the norm scores that you can see, that kind of curved shape as it goes up. So we have a good, healthy curve for all of our grades there. And this is a little different view of that data. This shows us that NWEA breaks the scores down into five categories, high, high average, average, low average, and low. And this shows the distribution of those students, I think. I think one thing of note is the strength of the first and second grade. We've really focused on um introducing Hegarty at that level, focus on the phonics program, the revised units of study. And you see some of that strength reflected there in that first and second grade especially. Now, when we look at ELA year to year, this is, this is, I, I, you know, a graph that we should be proud of here. This is the middle school scores. Middle school has been an area of focus as part of our strategic plan. Um, the fifth grade specifically, years ago, we were, you know, really, it was kind of an anomaly compared to our other scores. It was um a little bit lower. A lot of that comes from um most school districts, fifth grade is still in elementary grade. Here it moves into the middle school. For uh most of the schools, and I think it's probably fair to say, most of the schools in the state, um, they have longer blocks of ELA. For example, they can do a big block of reading and a big block of writing as opposed to what we have, like one period of English. Um, so we've done some, some creative things when it comes to the two-person teams, make, giving teachers a little more flexible time within that two, two-period block. Um, so they can focus a little more on ELA and math, um, or, or even have discretion on, um, when they teach those subjects. You can see that increase from forty-eight percent in two thousand twenty-two. This is student scoring in the high or high average achievement level um from forty-eight percent all the way up to eighty percent. So it actually is, is, as you can see, is stronger than sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So it's, it's nice to see that curve after those, that intentional effort. But really, all of the grades with the exception of sixth goes down by just one, um, one percentage point. The other grades are up pretty significantly, which is impressive. And then we shift over to the MAPS scores in math. And again, I have the normed line, so you can compare them here. And again, you see that's that pretty significant growth. And then this is the distribution. Now, this, this curve is nice. Usually when you look at a data presentation like this, a sloping line down to the right is not a good thing. But in this case, it is. And the reason for that is because the orange bar is the high bar, like student scoring in that high category. And then the dark blue is high average. So the more students you have in that high and high average, the stronger they're getting. So what this is basically saying is the longer students are here with us, the, the like, the larger number move into that high and high average category. So it's a really nice um kind of representation of how students are tracking. I, I don't know that I put a lot of credence in that eighth grade. Our eighth grade students take so many assessments. But what they're taking the regions exams, they're taking the MAPS assessment. They also take the New York State MAPS assessment. So um, in the spring of that year, they're taking three math assessments altogether. So um, that, that eighth grade bar, I'm not sure I'd be all that concerned. We have other data that shows they're learning in math. And this is that same graph where you can see um from year to year. You can really read this graph in two different ways. One of them is you can look at like the fifth, like fifth grade over time. The other one is you can track a cohort. So if you look at um two thousand twenty-five and eighth grade, um, those same students in two thousand twenty-four were in seventh grade. So you can see how a cohort tracks over time as well. So it's just another way to look at this. All right, before we leave NWEA, I did want to share, these are the raw NWEA data points. And we, we use a lot of different visualizations because they tell us different things about the data. And when we looked at the spark lines, you can see there's, there's, you see that upward slope. So it's basically a line that's showing you the slope between the fall administration, winter administration and spring administration. Um, and I did want to share, Mr. McNamara had asked that um, I give a little more detail around, like, how do we use this data to actually make some instructional decisions? So I just wanted to do a little bit of a think aloud of how that would work um when it comes to this data, because I think it's interesting. The first thing that jumps out at me is you can see the shape of the line in grades one, two, three, four, five. There is greater growth in the fall than there is in the spring. You see that, that line is sloped um more steeply up. That's probably due to some summer regression and then a quick recovery in the fall. And I think that's why we're seeing the shape of that line. But you also see in seventh grade, there's a, there's a flat kind of fall to inter um curve, which means the students are basically scoring the same. They're scoring two twenty-six. And then they, you know, with four months of school, it's still a two twenty-six. Um, so that's the kind of data that would jump out and we'd start to look a little bit more closely at, like, what is driving that flat line? Um, so the first thing I'd do is I'd look at the previous year's data, which I pulled. And you can see it was flat then too. This is two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four data. And in seventh grade, first semester, you can see there isn't much growth there either. So it's not like a cohort aberration. It's something potentially within our system is what I would be thinking about. Um, then I would think, is this something specific to seventh graders? You know, is there something going on there? And so I could looked at the math scores. Um, and you see that the students don't have that same shape in math. This happens to be twenty-three, twenty-four, but the same was true for twenty-four, twenty-five. So students are learning, they're showing their learning in math. They're just not showing their learning in ELA the same way. Um, then I pull up the scope, this is our scope and sequence, just a snapshot of scope and sequence. The MAPS assessment assesses reading level. It doesn't assess writing. Um, and you can see the first unit, September and October is writing realistic fiction. And then the reading part is just independent reading. So this is something that I would start to dig into. Um, the research says that independent reading is actually one of the best ways for students to kind of jump reading levels. Like it's, reading is like running, they say. So the more you read, the better you are as a reader. Um, but I would have some questions about how are we independently reading? Are we independently reading? What are we reading and how are we tracking it? How are students accountable to that independent reading? Because it doesn't seem to be based on the MAPS assessments, driving the same level of like student performance increase that we see in the other grades. So that's, that's kind of a little like bit of a peek under the hood of some of the thinking that we would go through. Um, typically, we don't like share all that information with the board, but I think it might be, you know, kind of, kind of neat to hear some of, of that thinking. So here's like the next step of that is um, we'd start to look at how is the performance distributed by school. We'd compare like in this case, Seven Bridges with Bell to see if there's some distribution differences. We'd look at how the differences are distributed across staff members. We typically in seventh grade would have four different teachers, two teachers in each school. So we'd look and see, or is there two very high and two not as high, just to see, you know, perhaps folks need some more support. We'd look at other variables, like personnel variables. If somebody, let's say we have somebody out on like a, like we have a leave replacement, for example, or something like that. Sometimes that will impact the data. Um, we'd look at subcategory scores. Are there populations of students that we track data for um, that are performing differently than they are in other grade levels, perhaps students with disabilities, for example? And we'd start to dig into that subcategory scores. Um, and then we start to ma- like address whether it's, you know, student subgroups or if it's curriculum or, you know, whatever it is that we think is driving that flatness, we'd start to make some decisions around adjusting that. And then hopefully see a difference in those scores in future years. So let me, let me pause there. That's the end of our NWEA section. See if there's any questions or thought about that, or if I should keep.
Sure, I've got one at this point. Thank you. Um, the small decline in eighth grade math performance that we saw that you said might be attributable to the number of exams they're taking. Is that a historic trend that we've seen in previous years, that there's also decline in that eighth grade cohort, uh, in, in the eighth grade math, regardless of cohort?
You know, it's, it has persisted from when we moved to algebra for all and also give the eighth grade math assessment and give the MAPS assessment. It seems that there's this um strategic choosing among the students of where they're gonna apply their effort. And I think at that point, um, students also understand that there's, there's nothing really attached to that assessment as they move into Greeley. They'd rather put their efforts into the regions exam, for example.
That's something we see each year. It's not a reason to be concerned about that particular board.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be. I don't know that we can. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of this that is, yeah, there's a lot of this.
Not really, that's the reason, but that can be one of the reasons, right? So then.
Is that not about that, but we have multiple data measures, data points for eighth grade, so we can share some of those. Uh, there's a section in the next presentation when we look at the algebra scores.
I also wonder if they get like testing fatigue, right? Um, and so then, do we need to continue with these testing? The other stuff that maybe we don't need and maybe they are, should be focusing on regions. But what if we have a year that some kids are not taking the regions, right? So I think it's just something to, to keep watching and to keep thinking, to see how we can evolve to better support our students um in both math and ELA. I think particularly in the grades, like where there's, there's transfer or there's change or there's a big jump, right? I know we talked about, at some point, we talked about when kids transition from fourth grade to fifth grade. And then also eighth grade, right, seven to eighth because of now what we expect from our kids um, in eighth grade. So um, I think just something to think about.
I just had two for you, Adam. I'm, I'm happy, my number one question as I went through the slides was that trend line where the inter-year jump in math is, is far, of far greater significance than the one in ELA. Um, so as we dig into that, obviously you looked through like the curriculum, the order of, of events. Is it? Could it be something in the actual curriculum, the way the kids are learning? Or you just think the way that the curriculum is structured based on when the test is given, i- i- or, or could it be a combination of both? Is that like, we would examine both ends or sort of just the order of events before they actually are taking the exam?
Yeah, what grade are you?
I was talking about the middle school in particular. Uh, you know, the trend line, the spark line that you, you had mentioned, where like the trend is definitely steeper. The math grades go up significantly inter-year a- at a higher rate than the ELA ones do.
Yeah, the, the math scores consistently, as you go through the middle school, you stretch more students into that like upper, that high and high average band. You don't see that same thing in ELA. That's, you know, that's true. Um, it's, the question is like, why, why is that?
Right.
You know, is it, is it, um, you know, there, there's so many contributing factors potentially, you know, there, the, we know that the number one quality is, is just like teacher advocacy, you know, how are we supporting our teachers, professional development, that kind of thing? The second piece is um the strength of the curriculum, you know, are there, are there adjustments that we can make over time? That will kind of move that needle. But, but I think it's also important to share that as we get into the state assessment in a minute. We're, we're not gonna leave middle school yet. We're gonna like loop through the state assessments as well. Um, where the state, we're gonna get into this in a few minutes. I might be getting ahead of myself. But the state um measure for like percent proficient hovers in the high forty percent. And we're talking for Chappaqua about like ninety percent.
You are splitting hairs on a lot of these graphs here. If you're trying to find like an outlier, it, it is, it is difficult.
Yeah, um, also squeezing a level of performance out of the organization that um, like out of, out of the like curriculum, out of the professional development, out of that, like we're, we're really on the top end, you know, last where we should, last year we shared for ELA. Um, we're, I think we were ranked number two in this, we were ranked number two in the state when you look at our ELA scores across the board. So um, when we say like, okay, they're seventh grade, we should look at this, you know, to keep it in perspective, the students are like doing really well, the district's doing really well. But I think part of the reason that we are where we are is because of that, like real ability to dig into these small pieces and say like what's happening in, with this group of students in this year, make adjustments.
And to that point, uh, you should really, you should be leaning in more to slide twenty-five. I think it is the fifth grade cohort of twenty twenty-two. Um, and then the fifth grade, vis a vis the fifth grade cohort in twenty twenty-five. I mean, that is a substantial growth effort here. And I, I, those fifth graders at that point really weren't enormously affected by COVID. Those were third graders. So this is obviously, uh, like you said, Hegarty implementation and like a lot of curricular development that we've done at the lower levels that has led to now, you know, fifth grade scores, you know, meteorically rising vis a vis only three years ago. So that's.
I think it also tells that we um combine the, that we collapse, I should say, collapse the teams into um, where teachers are teaching now two subjects as opposed to um, they were circulating. It was two teacher team instead of, no, it was four teacher team, and now it's two teacher team.
Yeah, we, we were, we were essentially asking our fifth graders to navigate a high school schedule.
Right.
It was, it was running like, almost like a junior high with the addition of a team. Like the team part did soften it a little bit, but students were still going to English, social studies, math, different places in the building. Um, so to change that to, to, to navigate two teachers, one for ELA and social studies, the other for math and science. Um, and then to push, put those teachers in close proximity and have them share students. So it's basically like a switch teacher model that you see in some elementary schools. Um, so that, I think, uh, you know, just to make it age appropriate, uh, we're seeing the, you know, performance there. There's also some strategic like recruiting from human resources and, and staffing and, you know, personnel decisions. And there were a lot of pieces to this that.
I think the major piece though was changing the structure of fifth grade, like to scaffold it up so it didn't feel totally new for kids when they transition buildings. That, that's what made the difference here. We were trying to figure this out for years and finally Adam and the teacher team in each level came up with this new model. And I think that this is the result of that, for sure. That is what changed.
Can I, this, sorry, this was, this was a team of about thirty educators. It's actually, these decisions were made during COVID. I was in, Andrew was in his attic and I was in my basement. Um, and we were, we were, uh, we were making this plan with a bunch of educators from the middle school. And it's really paid off, yeah, worked. Go ahead, sorry.
To your point about the spark line slide, um, about looking at that flat fall and winter for the seventh grade. So it seems like we have a plan of action to like look into what was happening there and then to make decisions moving forward. And I guess my question is, that group is now eighth graders. And is there a way, I mean, obviously there's a way to track them, how they did this year on the test, um, or how they will do this year on this year's test. They have to take it yet. Um, but just to keep an eye on that particular group to see how they're doing and if there's something we can layer in for them. Because if there was something that we determined they missed, it wants you to do, you know, your research on it. If there's something that was missing from the curriculum that you guys can pinpoint or something that they needs to be added on to that eighth grade cohort to help them get back up to where they need to be.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to give the impression that these students are behind. You know, these students are, are
Understand, yeah.
Performing well above the, like the norm line, even like it's, it's, it's very strong performance as a grade level. Um, and you also see the, like the spiked line, uh, you know, kind of to the, to the right side where you see that increase. Um, but you, you know, yeah, that's, it's just something for us to watch. It's, it seems to be part of our system for a few years now. So, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to see how that goes with that group of students.
And also as they get older, their scores don't tend to go up as dramatically as when they're younger. I mean, they only go up, even for the other grades, only a point or two across the line. So it's, it's, it's a very small things we're talking about, but it's just in this, it looks bigger on the line with the flat line, makes it look scarier than it is.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and you know, it's, it's not something to be afraid of as much as it is. It's, you know, very much like going to the doctor and getting a blood test and having one number that's a little out of whack. And you say like, what's, what's going on there? And perhaps they order another blood test. Do they make some recommendations about things you can do to adjust it? And this is, is, this is very similar where we're looking at our curriculum, our personnel across the buildings, seeing like where's that data coming from? And could we potentially adjust it? But that's a little bit, you know, typically that would happen behind the scenes in the curriculum office with the professional developers, interacting with the faculty, seeing what they think of it. They'll have ideas, we'll brainstorm, we'll plot a course of action going forward and, and improve that data.
But I think it's great for parents to hear what the thought process is behind it. When we see an area that looks a little wonky, then we're able to like really dig down and see how, how that happened. You know, whether it was per- personnel or curriculum or what, um, so we can fix it going forward.
I do want to share too, that, that is a tremendous growth model up there, K through eight. And a real credit to like our faculty and the work that they're doing with our students in our classes that we should all be proud of. And one of the reasons why we do this progressive test is, we're gonna show the ELA scores and the mass state scores in a second. They're really impressive. However, they don't yield the same amount of information for us to help support students throughout the year like this um assessment does. So we shall be, you know, we shall be proud of our, our staff and our students for the results that we experienced over the course of last year and the growth that they've made.
Not to single them out, but the elementary teachers, I mean, those lines are uh substantial. And, and you know, they're getting to middle school already developed uh to a certain extent. So I mean, they're, they're doing an amazing job down there.
Backed up a little bit here. All right, let me, let me go on to um the New York State tests. So the New York State tests are, are standards-based tests. And the difference between the, the main difference between the state tests and the NWEA tests are the state tests um, only an, only ask grade level questions. So for a third grade student, they're basically assuming they can do third grade work. The questions are aligned to the third grade standards. And if a student is, let's say, reading or computing well above that or well below that, we don't get any granular data as to what that student can or can't do. Um, instead, you're basically just getting information about can they do, like, to what extent can they do third grade level math or ELA? And so um with that, it becomes limited in a lot of ways, that in ways that the MAPS assessment is not limited. Um, this assessment might tell us, yeah, student does really good on third grade questions, but I have no idea if that means they can do fourth grade or fifth grade or sixth grade or what they can do within that. So um, that's, that's, we're looking at really a standards-based assessment. We, we have had some concerns over the years about the validity of the state data. Um, as recently as last year, we had that um computer-based testing system crash. We had multiple days where students would like start the test or it wouldn't be saved. And we wrote letters. I shared those with you as a board to the state, expressing our concerns. Um, two thousand twenty-four was our first shift to computer-based testing. Actually, it was, was fairly smooth in two thousand twenty-four. Somehow in two thousand twenty-five, it wasn't as smooth. Um, and you can see some other things, you know, two thousand twenty-two, I know I've also shared letters with some of you and, and previous board members. Some of you've got them perhaps as parents about that being a test of stamina. It was just much longer than other assessments that, that we had given those students. And, and you can see some other things, two thousand twenty-one, um, the state reused content. Some of our students had even practiced that content, like within the preceding week, other classes picked different content to practice. So um, there, there have been concerns over the years, so I just wanted to share that. Um, you can see the performance levels for the state. They also, they use a um performance level one through four scale. Um, a four is exceeding the standards, a three is meeting the standards. Um, a four is exceeding the standards, a three is meeting the standards or considering them proficient. Um, and level two is partially proficient, level one is below proficient. Parent scores will be, will be released, they were in the process of uploading them to backpack, we did receive them from the state recently, they actually come from the state. We PDF them, upload them to the campus backpack and they will be released on Friday morning is the plan, so parents will be able to see those state reports there. Um, for parents who have students in grades, it's really like four through nine, uh, because it's last year's three through eight. So our ELA tests, uh, multiple choice and open ended question, there's some multiple choice, there's some um, writing on this test as well, they apply their knowledge. Um, and open ended responses, explain their reading, read passages, things like that. Um, here are our results from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty five. Um, you can see here that. You know, the scores are, are pretty strong, you know, here we were talking about seventh grade with the MAPS assessment, but here you can see they're, you know, they're doing very well with eighty eight percent. Of the students are proficient, proficient means the student scored either a three or a four on the assessment, um, is considered proficient, so you can see the. Proficiency scores, and as I said, in the, for the state, the um, percent proficient generally hovers like around forty five percent. Depending on the grade at give or take a few percentage points.
I just want, I have to stop, you gotta go back.
Oh, yeah.
In the, um, I just want to acknowledge like the third grade scores jumped ten percent, it's like unheard of. Right, so I just, we're, we're sitting here, we're talking about ELA, we're, we're thinking about like what does the program look like, and so this is. The task that we have as we continue to see our performance just um, be in so many ways outstanding. Not that we can't always do better, but I just, I want to acknowledge our, I mean, all of our scores in ELA. I think are very strong, but to have a ten percent increase like that, I just wanted to point that out, it's marketable.
And you also can see that um, fifth grade that we were talking about before from two thousand twenty two to two. Two thousand twenty five, you see that increases, this is a different test, but you're seeing kind of a like a multiple measure, um, you see, you also see that increase. And, and we were, you know, I, I was sharing in seventh grade about that flat line, but here you see, you know, eighty eight percent of the students are proficient, which is. You know, well within line of the other grades, so it's strong performance um, there for ELA in seventh grade. And this is our ELA distribution, these tests are designed to, to create a bell curve where there are more twos, twos and threes than ones and fours. Um, but you don't see that here, you see a larger number of students scoring four, which of course is a positive thing, um, and a fair number at level three. So that's the distribution, we're gonna transition onto the math test, it's multiple choice, there are solving problems, there's graphs, charts, things like that, tables. Much of, much, there's, there's much more reading, like increasingly, there's reading on the math test too, there, you know, big long word problems, it's such as numbers, but. Um, I love that Matt's shaking his head, he's lived through all of this, since all these different grades, so um, math, three through eight, year to year, again, you can see the um. You know, from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty five, you can follow a cohort by, you know, kind of moving across, or you can see the. Trend in a particular grade, but again, strong data, it's, it's, you know, up, up or even across the board, um, which is very positive. And then again, our math three through eight distribution. Oh, I didn't, I'm missing a number there up on level four, but you can see the. Shape of our curve is a really positive one. All right, so the, the grade five science test is a new test, we gave it for the second time this last um, spring. Um, science test, you can see, you know, what you'd expect, multiple choice questions, some open ended question, there's a lot of like experiments that are described as part of the test. Data reading, it is another reading test, or a large passages, um, big nonfiction passages. Um, this one, you can see the state, I put in the state proficiency scores, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five, and then ours. And that, those are the blue lines seventy six and seventy five, um, these are, are not as strong yet as our ELA and math scores. You know, you just, we're not, we're not seeing that same distribution, it's a fairly new test, um, and, and I think we probably could. Spend a little more time on our science instruction at the elementary schools, you know, it just, it is what it is, you know, the afternoon is typically devoted to, you know, chunks of social studies and science. Often the teachers will alternate between the two, um, but I, but I do think to recommit ourselves to some really good deep science instruction at the elementary school would be prudent. Um, this is a fifth grade test, but it's not just fifth grade content, it's actually content because of the way the science curriculum is written, the curriculum spirals through, so. In fifth grade, you might not cover a particular topic, solar systems or geography or something like that, uh, geology, excuse me, um. However, they should have done that in previous grades, and so that content is spiraled through, so we have a little work to do there, I think.
So where that work will land is the strategic planning fellowship. So at our first meeting, we'll be going over our data and then as we break into our subgroups, this will be an area of focus for us.
Yeah, so science five, you can see the distribution, it's different than the math distribution and ELA distribution. I did a little bit of a side by side, just so you could see the difference where the, this, we are creating more of a bell shaped curve. Um, for science on the left there, again, it is a fairly new test, we've only seen it twice, um, have some work to do there, in, in my opinion, as. Dr. Ackerman said, we'll bring this up with the strategic plan, develop a path forward, um, but it's just not, it's, it's atypical for how our students fare on these tests in terms of. The percent proficient, but also in terms of the shape of the curve where we're, you know, we like to see more level fours than threes. I think to be fair to the students and teachers, it was a pretty hard, it was a pretty hard test, it was a pretty hard science test for fifth grader, so. All right, so let's go, um, we're gonna transition, let me pause there, actually, go ahead, Alyssa.
Um, yeah, before you go on, um, can you just, for the benefit of the parents in the, in the room and who are maybe watching online. Can we just talk about what we do for kids who score a one or a two or a low and low average on the MAPS test?
Yeah, so the, the, thank you for asking it, the um, New York State every year publishes a cut score, which is a. A numeric score, it's not just a one, two, three, four, we actually have not, like a numbered score, they, those numbers also appear on the parent reports. Um, New York State publishes a cut score, it's a public cut score, um, and districts are told that any, any student that scores. Below that cut score should be considered for some type of academic intervention services. So that's where we start, the state also requires in the board's AIS plan, the district's AIS plan, um, requires that you use multiple measures, so the first measure is required to be that cut score. So all students that score below that cut score are considered for AIS, and then we use other measures to determine if AIS is the best fit. In some cases, that state score is, is real, like an outlier, and typically students really strong and their report cards are strong and their map scores are strong. Um, but that state test, for whatever reason, didn't reflect that, um, and so in those cases, they'd be put kind of on a, a list of students to watch, just to make sure that. They're continuing to make progress, um, in other cases where a student also hits other measures, we use about forty percent on N W B A. Um, if a student's in the fortieth percentile or lower and below that cut score, then they're kind of filed into that academic intervention services. And, and those can take place in both reading and math, they can be push out services or. Uh, or pull out services, where they pull a student out of class to provide some additional support or push in services. Um, but the student would have access to like a math specialist or reading specialist to provide some extra instruction. And then they'll collect data on that student, um, progress monitor and, and, you know, reassess to decide, determine if they need to continue with AIS or not.
Thanks.
Uh, Adam, I, I appreciate the sentiment about the science because we sort of leveled up science in eighth grade now, so. Starting it a little earlier, I think is, is a good idea, um, but I would also say like, the scores. Are the scores, there are, there are plenty of schools out there who just actually teach so that the students can beat the tests, and we're not doing that here, so. I think there's something to be said, like if our teachers spent like a full month just saying, okay, hey, we're gonna attack this science ELA and the way, uh, science. State exam in the way that you can beat it, we, we probably would do better, but that's not what we want out of our kids.
Yes.
And that these scores are just, you know, one data point that aren't essentially more important than them learning, like in a, in a real authentic way.
Also, uh, if you speak with our, when we speak to our eighth grade teachers and we talk to the reading fellowship. One of the things that we continue to discuss are ways to expose students to content based material to help them. With close reading and are there different ways that we can supplement to help prepare students? Not only for this examination, but just for some of the trends that we're seeing around, um, being able to really. Um, interact with text on grade level, that's content specific, that allows them to really practice their comprehension and close read and. And search for information and answer questions, so that's, it's kind of all connected to it, it's all connected, so we're.
Well, I think there was a lot of feedback about the biology regions, that it was more of a reading test than anything else, so, yeah. I, I think that's important.
I think the other thing, um, I guess to note is that what Dr. P said earlier on how usually. Traditionally, if you're a classroom teacher, science and social studies kind of get left to the afternoons and. We can like afternoons, we don't have to like afternoons, but what happens is we have lunch and then it's the afternoon, and then it's science. And so really, more than the, the scores, for me, I would love to see children. Just appreciating science as a subject, um, overall, which in, in turn will hopefully increase. The level of interest and just. Wanting to learn more and, and then, you know, ultimately just doing better on their exams, but obviously never ever teach to the test. Um, like Matt said, but I think there is that, and I do think that's something that we need to look at. Because it's not just science, it's social studies instruction as well, um, and so there are ways where we can. Sort of do that type of teaching. While also teaching reading, the close reading and whether it's nonfiction texts or, or not, um, and, and also applying writing into that. Um, so I think it, again, something that, you know, I. I just want to say that when I look at these slides and, you know, I see bar graphs and charts and going up and a little dip or not. That doesn't concern me as much, it's more of, how do the students actually feel, are they feeling confident at the end of the day? Coming out and then going through the years, are they confident writers, right? You know, there are studies after studies that show if you're a strong reader, then you should be a good writer, but we don't see that necessarily here. In Chappaqua, and I think that is something that we really need to tackle, um, in, in a real aggressive way, because it's not making sense. There's some sort of disconnect there, we, we do have strong readers, which the ELAs tell us, the scores, I mean, ten percent, that is, you know, significant jump. And, but yet the writing, it, it's not really, it, it doesn't, it doesn't add up. So we gotta figure something out there, um, but I think it all, I think we can, I think we can do it. And so I'm very hopeful.
All right, we're gonna transition onto regions exams, um, I'll just click her, sorry. All right, so here you can see the average score for the ELA region, or the English regions exam, we, we. Um, give this, administer this assessment to tenth graders, the end of the, like June of the tenth grade year. And you can see there is just a, a bit of a downward trend from kind of eighty nine down to eighty six and then eighty five. Um, for the average score, um, you know, that, that, those data don't concern me as much as this. Um, in that you do, you also see this trend of um, kind of that's decreasing size of that dark blue bar. So like that's students achieving, they call it mastery of the regions exam, and then that, you do see that increase, this is a graduation requirement, students have to pass this assessment to. To graduate, and so like that, um, sixty four to seventy five bar increases, but also the zero to sixty four, and although it's a small number, it is like, this is. A graduation requirement, and so, um, we're, we're working towards this being like hundred percent pass rate is the goal for, for an assessment like this.
So let me share, so where we're talking about this particular um, result is in the reading fellowship, there's a sub. Of high school, um, English teachers and administrators and central office, so. This was like our focus area today that we were looking at to try to figure out. What adjustments do we need to make to the curriculum, to our approach, maybe to our course offerings? To, to start to really begin to address this, and so we'll be doing that work over the course of this year, and I think it's. Good practice when we see areas that we're concerned about, that we just don't. Figure out ourselves, by ourselves, like what are the next step, that's why we have the fellowships in place to work with our faculty to figure it out together.
So this is, this is the um, same data, but just represented differently, and again, you can see that in this case, the percent passing over there on the right side is, is. Kind of a downward trend, which is obviously um, something we don't, we don't like to see and, and something we're going to address with our. Administrators and our faculty and our curriculum office to uh, see what adjustments, we, we do have, there, there's a lot of really good options out there when it comes to ELA. Or English curriculum at the high school level, and so we should, uh, we're gonna do a little bit thinking about that and report back. All right, these are our algebra scores, um, mean scores, year to year, you can see the um, two thousand twenty four. Middle school and high school, two thousand twenty five, middle school and high school, we put all of that data together. There, and then you can see the distribution. Over time to see how the bands kind of distribute. Um, I also wanted to create a bit of a flow chart, um, Dr. Ackerman and I were thinking about how students were like tracking through and how we could visualize that. And so, um, you can see two hundred and seventy four students took that algebra June regions in eighth grade. Two hundred and sixty three of them passed, eleven did not, zero to sixty four, um, six of the eleven took the algebra August regions. One passed, five did not, and so that's kind of where we, where we ended up there. Um, they can, this is another graduation requirement, this math assessment, they can continue to take this assessment, they can take it in January, they can take it again in June. Um, we have, um, obviously when you continue to, in your math, kind of sequencing, you, they, you know, assuming students get credit for the course. They would, they could potentially go into the next course, even though they didn't pass the test, and building, continuing to build those math muscles and skills. Through the different courses as well as us, us offering some after school review sessions and preparation sessions and things like that. Um, try to get them through, there's also, there's some options there, you can appeal a score to the superintendent, there's also. Um, kind of a low pass safety net for students with disabilities that have I E Ps, there's some like other ways for us to.
So that would be if, like about fifty five, would you, would, okay.
Yep.
And, and the other five just did not take it?
Yeah.
Again, okay.
Yeah. In some cases, you know, those are all conversations between a, like a counselor and a van, a school counselor and a family, and they're trying to like, let's, let's chart the best course. In some cases, they're, um, you know, the, these are very kind of specialized students with unique needs, and so it becomes a real conversation about what that high school plan looks like. What courses are going to take and how they're gonna tackle these different graduation requirements, um, students with, um, with an IP. There is a local diploma option, and that's where that like low pass option comes in, um, kind of a safety net for the region scores. But counselors will work with families and students on those. All right, so I, I also wanted to share, and we're going to transition into the life science biology regions, which was very complicated, but I did want to share. That New York, changing regions exams is not new to New York State, and this goes back all the way, like I pulled some recent history. Um, two thousand nineteen, we got a new global history regions exam, that seemed to go pretty much without a hitch. Um, and then you can see two thousand twenty three, US history and government was changed, it was aligned to the new New York State framework. Um, they changed algebra in June two thousand twenty four, we didn't see the same kind of hiccups that we saw, we, we general, we don't give the geometry. Um, we didn't give earth and space science, that's the new earth science regions exam, uh, but we did give the life science biology exam. Um, and that's what generated kind of a lot of, of trouble, confusion, et cetera. Um, algebra two, we generally don't give, um, the English regions is going to be new in June to twenty twenty six. So this June, there's a new English regions aligned to these um, next generation ELA standards. So that's how that life science sits in context, um, to be honest, it was quite a surprise to us, and I think it's fair to say across the state. To see that, what that assessment actually looked like and how the scores um, end out. So, so for those that aren't up to speed with all of this, it was, um, many years ago, it was called biology, the course then changed. To living environment, living environment stayed in place for probably over fifteen years, um, and then just last year, last June. They shifted that exam, one of the options was to give the life science biology exam while they were grandfathering out the living environment assessment. Um, this June is the last time they'll give that living environment assessment, there is a period of overlap between the two assessments. You can see here, the mean score dropped, you know, we were generally in the kind of mid to upper eighties and it dropped to a seventy eight. Um, with that new assessment.
Dr. P, am I understanding this correctly, we are phasing out the regions diploma. At the state level, and yet we are now adding a new regions option. At twenty twenty six being ELA, I mean, I, I could guess why they're doing that. It's gonna be, it's not, they're not completely getting rid of it, it's, it's just gonna try to figure out, I guess, multiple pathways. In terms of diplomas, but.
Yeah, so we're waiting for more clarity around what those multiple pathways. Will look like, but what has been made clear at this point in time is that we will have to continue to test our students at the high school level. To meet federal requirements, so um, it's, state ed has. Slowly been releasing information about this, but has not provided the clarity yet. As to what this is actually gonna look like real time, so um, it's gonna, the, this transition happens in twenty twenty seven. So it's our hope that over the next year, they start to really frame for us how to. Um, align our graduation requirements to their profile of a graduate. More, more to come. More, to more to come.
Alright, let me go back just one. So this is, these are our data. You can see living environment for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. In two thousand twenty-four, we had two cohorts of students take living environment. One was the eighth grade group that took that course, and one was the ninth grade group. Um, a, strong performance for, you know, adding in a whole group of eighth graders into that cohort. And our eighth graders did, did nearly as well. I think it was like one point off of our high school students that took that course. It was a really strong showing in two thousand twenty-four. Um, we were surprised in two thousand twenty-five with the distribution. Uh, many students dropped down into that seventy-five to eighty-four, and that, that happened across the state. You know, there were, there was some. Articles out there and, and whatnot, um, about that, letters coming from various organizations and, and one from me. I'm about, I'm like, as a former, as a former biology teacher, um, how I felt about that test, but I, I did have a chance to review the test and, and. Many of those questions, I, I would not be surprised if they were on an AP exam. You know, they were, they were very challenging.
Can I just point out, e- even though there's a slight increase, the passing rate was pretty much the same. It was the score that students received on the exam that was much lower. So if you look at the next slide, you can see how many students passed versus those that didn't achieve passing and then. Uh, what happened over the summer. So I'll let Adam explain that.
Yeah, so the, the pass rate was ninety-three percent for the June administration, which was just a, a point or two. I forget the exact number, but it was not. It was not far off of our passing rate from before, but I think it did bump a lot of stu-, a, a lot of students saw. Grades on our regions exam that they are not used to getting. Like, you know, that's, 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 I think, what it comes down to. You can see how the, again, the students kind of track through. Um, again, two hundred and seventy-three students, um, two hundred and fifty-four passed, nineteen did not. Two of those students took the biology August regions, the bulk we recommended to take the living environment regions. They did have to do some summer work in order to take that because there's required labs that go with that living environment. Course that we did not do as part of the life science biology course. Um, but we felt like the test was. I don't know how to describe it, probably, probably a better option for students that, that were not successful in the. Life science biology based on what we had seen. Um, and you can see the result of that. The recommendation for students coming out of the middle school. So we did get, get ourselves to a, a ninety-seven percent pass rate, you know. Through the students that took the, took the assessment. Um. The pathway for students that did, like, were not successful, that small group of students. Um, they were able to go into the elective programming in ninth grade. They could choose courses. We generally recommended that they take the life science courses. So there's a. Unraveling the genetic code semester long course, and there's a um, citizen science ecology course, which genetics and ecology are two big. Units in that course. So, um, we were, they can also take the exam again in January. They can take it again in June. Um, and being in a full year of kind of more life science, the hope is that they'll can, you know, be able to do that. We did offer two options for summer review programs as well. Um, for those students.
So the, um, the conversation this year, moving into the following school year is all of our students. In eighth grade will be taking the living environment regions. So I anticipate we'll be in the same spot that we were when we offered that the last time. But I think we're, we're gonna have to have conversations around, um, not the recommendation process, but like. The information that parents need to understand if the, um. The regions exam doesn't adjust that the students took last June. They need to have an understanding of what that's gonna look like before they select what courses they want their kids to. So that's gonna be like a larger conversation that we're gonna need to have and then come back to the board before we begin enrollment process for classes. Uh, for eighth grade for next school year.
I would really like to, um, ask Dr. Ackerman and Dr. Peace, when you are having those discussions that I just wanna reiterate. My personal opinion on how I feel about offering eighth grade math and eighth grade science as a course that is. An option, but you will run the class without having a minimum and attached to that course. So that when families and school district come together to think about what is appropriate with now. Whether the science test is going to be the same as what happened this year or not, that this is a consideration and that. We can offer it to everybody, but there are going to be, and I, I would love. You know, I don't know what kinds of conversations and who's involved in those conversations, but I think, you know. Obviously. People in the special ed department in, in that world is gonna have to be involved in that conversation. The department and E N L is gonna have to be a part of that conversation and. I agree and understand at the same time. The, the, the desire to offer this and open it up for everyone to have access to this and. But at the same time, I think there are always going to be families and students. Who will feel more successful, not to say that they can't succeed, but who, who may feel more successful taking. Eighth grade math and eighth grade science. I mean, eighth grade math and eighth grade science is. Is a class. It's, it, it, it's not bad. It's not, it's not like, it's a virus. It, we don't, we're not anti that. But I think we really, I would love for everyone to have that convers-, revisit that conversation because. I really, really believe that if you put a number. And say, if we don't have this many kids in each of the middle buildings to run this class, I don't know if that's. I don't know if that's the best choice for our, our students. I rea-, I really, really just don't know. Um. Yeah. It's, it's a, it's a huge deal. It's been going on ever since we, we piloted all of these changes and. And I know we evolve and we keep adjusting and we figure it out and, but as we are doing that, there are. Students that are suffering from, from our decisions. So I wanna make sure that we're doing the best that we can. To support these students and, and just be honest and say, hey, like, this is what the district would like everybody to do, but. And here are the scores, here, here's how they've been doing, but, and it goes, and you know, and parents have to do their part and say, well. Even if my child cries and say, well, I wanna take that level class, cause all my friends are in that level class, you make the decisions. As adults, as parents with the school saying, okay, well, no, this is what's best for our child. With, you know, my child's needs and, you know, learning habits and. Whatever else they need to think about. Um, because it's, this problem is here and it's been here and we need to talk about it.
Yeah, I think, I, to, to your point, absolutely. And I think there are things that we'll need to discuss, like as a group. Do we, do we all believe in open enrollment? Right? That's part of the conversation. Do we feel like a class with. Um, a certain number of students is okay to budget for and run? Should we look to see, based on the schedule? And I don't know. You know, if we can combine the buildings in one space to run a course. If we are, and we are going to look at, even though it's not the data presentation, potentially offering a small, uh, class. For s-, uh, students, uh, with specific needs in one of the middle schools. Does that address some of what we're hearing too? So. This'll be, it's a, and if the, if the livi-, if the test is so, um, reading. Heavy, then, you know, what is, what is a, a, a s-, a solid luxile score to be successful in that exam? And should, should we communicate that or how do we communicate that to parents? So that, those are all like important conversations that we know we need to have. And so we just need to make sure we provide enough runway so we can have those conversations in this space. So everyone, um, understands what everyone's thinking.
Yeah, and no, I appreciate that because, I mean, listen, we need to budget for it. We need to make sure that it can happen. We have teachers for it. We have staff, right? Um, but at the same time, we have classes up here at Greeley that run with. Very small amount of students in the class. And one might say, is that class more important than opening up an eighth grade math class or eighth grade science course? And so. That is really a consideration.
I, I think just, just because, uh, I, I sort of wanna just. Add on to what, what Kaylee's talking about there is, I think the Zooms that we do and these meetings are, are great, but like. Streamlining the communications to the middle school parents about what lies ahead, seventh and eighth grade. I think is, is super important. I don't think we do a great job of, of that and ensuring that they have all the information at their fingertips, like. The decisions you make based on your eighth grade course selection could impact what colleges you can s- apply to five years down the road. So. I don't know what the best way, but for me, it's like some sort of like text, like an email, like, so it's got it. Because like, we can.
Text that.
No, no, I'm talking about text like in front of your, so you, you can have it in an inbox or in, in your mailbox or whatever it is because. I think people still are confused, like, parents are like, oh, I don't, I don't want you to have to worry about this in eighth grade. But that decision also has consequences on the other end. Um, a- and, and no, I, I just think that that. Communication really needs to be very clear and it needs to start even earlier than we're doing it now. A- and to that point, I think. We are expecting a lot from the eighth grade students and, and we talked about sort of, you know, my, my sense is sort of like Kaylee is, it's like. Can we tone it down a little bit? But if, if that's not the path we're gonna take, then the on-ramp has to be. Like not as steep where it's like, okay, we're playing, you know, you know, obviously the scores are great, but like, you know. Fifth, sixth, like, it's gonna have to elevate a little bit more so that it's not such a like smack in the face, so to speak, when you hit eighth grade.
So when we meet with the, the t-, uh, the science teachers, that, one of the things that they always share with us, other than close reading skills. Is that, um, what they spend a lot of their first. Month, I don't wanna speak for them, but I, I'll just share with you, is around executive functioning and helping students really organize themselves around curriculum. Which I think has been helpful for freshmen who've been more prepared as they've come in because of the eighth grade experience. But I also, I ca-, I understand the counterpoint to that as well. And so. Um, we're always open to talking about it in a way that is, is best for kids.
For me, it's not so much like the content. It's more, you know, I, like, I have young kids, but like. You know, my daughter gets home from school and it's like, oh, where am I going now? I'm gonna, but like, there's no for, like, hey, what about your homework? You know, I don't have, like, it's sort of just like ramping it up even at the elementary level. Hey, like, you just got, like, in fourth grade, maybe. An assignment every single night, just to sort of develop those habits, cause when eighth grade happens, it gets really real for these kids and they're just not prepared. Like academically, they are just not from an executive functioning perspective.
You know, when I was in middle school, granted, this was a thousand years ago now, uh, I actually had a class called study skills where they taught you. How to highlight the textbook. I don't think we have textbooks anymore, but like, they literally taught you how to make an outline, how to study for a test and just. Walked you through those executive functioning things that you were talking about a moment ago. And so maybe there's a way to add that into the middle school, um. You know, guidance program where they have, take some of that weight off of the science teachers, but filter it into their advisory program or something where they could get some. Help on, on filling out your homework in the homework book and, and, and learning how to study for tests and that kind of thing to help them get ready.
And, and I'll just say, um, I appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Ackerman, about that piece where. Kids are learning how to navigate through these high school courses, just like when we were talking about the fifth graders. Um, being expected to run a high school schedule in fifth grade when they got to middle school. And I think it's, it's, a big piece of it is education and not in necessarily the content, but in. How to be prepared and not just for the students, but actually also for the families. Um, that are guiding and supporting the students because we are asking eighth graders and how old are they at, at eighth? Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, to now act like a high schooler. And there's, and we know that there's. These are these developmental years that, you know, you have late bloomers, you have, you know, fast runners, you got, you got a lot of things going on here. And the parents are also not aware of what's happening and how to help and support the students. So it, it, it's. I, I think we could just get better at, you know, supporting all around. Um, and these are. These are one of the ways where we say, okay, well, when you take a regions course, these are the things that you have to think about, right? And so you're not thinking about it, like to Matt's point, at, in eighth grade, you're thinking about it. You know, and not to put pressure and, and not to tone it down or anything like that, but I think, I think there's room for both. There are the kids who's gonna be just fine, doing everything and, and excelling and, and at that rate, right? And then there's gonna be kids who are go-, also gonna be excelling, but at a different rate, but they're nevertheless excelling. And so. I think there's room for both and there has to be classes for both. So I, I think that's just something that we really need to just kind of keep coming back to and say, you know. We have a new assistant superintendent of PPS here, right? Who can also chime in and give us some insight to all of this. Um, I, I think, I think we can do it.
So before, thank you for, for all those comments. I, I think it'll be, you know, ongoing discussion, and I'm thinking about our middle school presentation and some things that we can. Highlight around that based on this discussion. Uh, they may be watching us at, at home. Uh, so. But, but I do wanna say, we did, um, we did focus groups with our eighth graders and we also surveyed our eighth graders about their experiences in middle school with all these different courses. And we asked them questions about, was this course too easy, too hard, or just right for the different subjects and the different grade levels and. Um, asked them to report out and like overwhelmingly, we got really positive feedback on this biology course. The, like. You, and, and it was also highlighted as part of the board presentation. They have, they have great units around. Um, the genetics unit is about the woolly mammoth. And just because we can bring the woolly mammoth back, should we bring the woolly mammoth back? Like, we can take the genes of woolly mammoth and, um, through genetics. And, and so there's like this, like bioethics and debate and. This is the marathon runner. You might remember the marathon runner test where the hu-, anatomy and physiology isn't like we used to teach it. It's. It's learning it through this episode of this marathon runner that crashes, which is tied to a true story. So, so as we went through the year and we did focus groups with. Our eighth graders and also surveyed our eighth graders and, and just anecdotally from the faculty. Um, I think the faculty and the students worked really hard and this was a really great experience for kids. And then all of a sudden in June, we hit this regions exam and it's not perfect. And we have to talk about all those things about where does science eight live? If it, if it does live and how many kids should we have in it to run it and all those things like that? That's all. Real and, and we need to have those discussions, but overwhelmingly, we got really positive feedback. On this course and this experience until the regions exam. And, and I don't know that. I, I don't know why that regions exam looked the way it did. Maybe it was purposeful and strategic and thoughtful at the state level. And, and they had some intention that they just haven't shared yet, or maybe it just wasn't. And, and it was not written like in a way that they intended. I don't know.
Did they respond back to your letter?
Uh, actually, yes, we did. We had a, one of the regions did, did contact us in response to the letter and appreciated some of the suggestions that we had. Created, but it didn't change, you know, it didn't change.
Respond to the state. They got so much feedback about that exam and the earth science exam. So it was a topic in one of their readings, but they. Of course, didn't share that they would make any shifts.
But we, we had a, I don't, I don't know all the details around it, but we had an option. To not take that version, right? But we opted to, so who made that decision and why did we do that?
Yeah, so that decision was made generally when we, like, we had seen this course changing for years. They had given us a timeline and, and a runway attached to it. We actually taught the new NGSS-aligned, um, life science biology curriculum in the new visions. And the, the risk was we gave the old test with the new curriculum the year before. So two thousand twenty-four, we gave, we taught the new course because it's a, it's better curriculum. It's, it's really like thinking like a scientist. It's. Um, a lot more experiential learning, a lot, it's a lot more interdisciplinary. Um, it's a lot more current. The old course was probably twenty years old. And so we felt like when there is better curriculum, we should be teaching the better curriculum. And the test is better aligned to that new curriculum. So the new visions curriculum is the life science biology curriculum. We taught that life science biology curriculum because we didn't feel like it was a good move to have the eighth grade teachers, some of which had never taught. The living environment or the life science biology, um, since they had never taught living environment, it didn't feel right to say, okay, teach the old curriculum for one year and then we're gonna. Transition over and you're gonna have to teach a whole new curriculum. So we just started with the new curriculum, which is a much stronger curriculum. Um, assuming that the assessment would be a fair assessment of that curriculum and that. The second year in two thousand twenty-five, that now we have a chance to align the test with the curriculum. Our kids are gonna do even better than they did on the living environment. We didn't have any samples and in hindsight, I wouldn't have made that decision. Um, but there was, there was no one, you know, faculty included, saying that's like the wrong decision. We should stick with living environment. Um, it, in hindsight, I think the thinking of to let somebody else go first, get a test sampler, uh, have some re- review questions, you know, that kind of thing. Seems prudent, but I think the criticism of that would be, why, why do we continue to teach this old course? It's twenty years old when we know we can do better with regard to the student experience. So. Um, we're, we're back to new course, old test for June. The problem is that it's only one more. Round of the administration of that test in June. Um, so if the students don't pass living environment, they will have to take life science biology. That's the only choice left after June twenty-six.
I need a chart of everything.
Sorry.
Should we move on?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, um, some regions exam scores, uh, chemistry exam, um. You can see the exam count. I tried to report the ones where, you know, a large, larger number of students generally took them. Um, so you can see the chemi- Um so you can see the chemistry exam average scores, global and US history. The reason US history, US history is a graduation requirement, however. Um AP US, if you a student scores a three or four or five, they can use it as a substitute for that regions exam score, so for many of our students, they don't. Take the US history, they would only take it if they didn't score a at least a three and then they'd have to either take the regions. Um or retake that AP exam, so you can see those scores there.
Something going on in chemistry there, there was a dip. Oh, wait, that's this, that's this, that's the dates wrong, right?
Uh twenty five, that should be twenty four, twenty five, sorry, seventy three, I think that data is right, I'm not, I'm not sure what the dip is or why the why the dip.
I'll tell you, we're we're not offering that regions exam anymore. We decided not to do that. We don't need to.
Okay.
And so the teachers are gonna develop their own assessment, sorry, Matthew.
Well, those numbers, those, I apologize for those years, those are years are all, those years are all wrong.
We'll fix it before.
All right, so then we're gonna transition to advanced placement exams, you can see the total AP exams by year, we're going to get into like why the increase in a minute. Well, we have a chart that shows all the different exams, um but that just gives you sense of it trending up. Um this is a graph that just compares the total number of students, like our student enrollment and all of Greeley. Um is is like slowly, a little bit of a decline, you could see, um but but basically flat, but there is a pretty significant increase in the number of AP exams that students are taking. And you see a a even with the number going up, you you do see that increase in um number of students that are scoring or percent of students that are scoring a three or better. Um so that's a, you know, that's an impressive increase. Um and here you see the exam scores year to year, so so again, you see that um upward shift on the right side, the fours and fives, that's a. Of like a positive trend and that downward shift of ones and twos, that's a positive trend too, so overall, you know, even though more students are taking these assessments. They're doing better than ever, which is great to see. And I think, you know, the the results of these exams are a tribute to the faculty teaching them, but also the faculty lead with the courses leading up to them, you know, in many cases, it's it's really a pretty robust skill set that a student needs to have. To even go into the course to tackle um many of these AP exams and then you see the um. AP average scores here for all of the different exams, you see, you know, some of the spikes in the number of APs come from offering the economics. Course, the AP economics, I think we ran five sections of it last year, um and so you can see a hundred and twenty exams in that macroeconomics. Um another one is the um research class and the seminar class, see seminar at ninety nine, it's almost a hundred students there. And then the research course, which is the second year of that course, um you see twenty five students took that. I would imagine that that research number is gonna jump up next year from the seminar students this year. Um so we'll see an increase there and and I really think those are, those are courses that are really AP done right, you know, that that there's a lot of authenticity in that work, students really digging in, doing authentic research. Um reading research, debating current topics, um some of the old AP exams are kind of a race through memorizing content with some of these new new AP exams are really good, strong exams. All right, any questions on AP or discussion around AP before I go into SAT ACT?
I wanna put a, give a little plug in about the AP. We had community day actually this past weekend and I we had, like we always do, we have the student suggestion box and we I. Happened to be on my shift and we had a couple of really juniors, junior ladies come by and, you know. Put in that they would like to see more AP um classes for. The humanities, for English and and social studies and that they don't have many options. And so they were all getting their friends, I don't know how many more of them came by after my shift, but that was, that was one and I know that. You know, I'll say that they were looking for you, Matthew, um some of the middle schoolers said we're gonna contact Matthew. Um and email about the school lunches because it is terrible. One was AP and one was not, but when it that reminded me of that.
Great, yeah, there there and there are some options, there's um, you know, AP language, AP literature, um the we could potentially make some adjustments in that. Um AP seminar course, right now it's an elective credit in the life school, it counts as an English credit, it's a little bit of a different course, but we could consider it an English credit. So there are some like adjustments we could make um to that program, but that's um as Dr. Ackerman mentioned, some work of the strategic plan, they look through this, the strategic planning committee. As they look through this presentation.
Can I ask you about um the environmental science?
Yes.
That tends, looks like a hard one.
Yeah, so so environmental science, Matthew, I invite you to jump in if you have any experience with any of the these. Science courses, um environmental science has a reputation of being a good starting point for students that may not feel like they're ready for AP chem or AP physics. And so um or even AP biology, I think it has a reputation of actually not being as challenging in some cases and so some students might try it. That that um wouldn't maybe be ready or want to take on one of the other APs, so I I think among the students and I think it's probably fair. That they have a reputation of some of them being much harder than others and and AP environmental science is one that many of our students challenges themselves to take. That aren't typically taking a whole, you know, stack of APs, so so I think that that's why you see that low score. But the nice thing about the AP research is is it says that even the access to the rigor of an AP course will prepare students tremendously for college. So for for, you know, we have ninety nine percent of our students go on to go on to college and for students that wouldn't typically stack up a bunch of AP exams to have a chance to. Give an AP a shot, I think is probably a positive thing.
I also want to add, the AP environmental science, for some students who want to take more than one um AP science class or. Um are just interested in exploring other areas of science, that from what I'm a junior this year, so this is just a lot of um. Just something that I've heard, that is often tends to be that second science class because, you know, you're balancing AP chem or AP bio. Um which is very, which is very challenging, it just when it tends to be a little bit more easy, so it can maybe get a little bit more push push back just because of the rigor of the other ones.
All right, so we've we've recrunched that one regions number slide, I think, and David's gonna.
Cause there's no way we're gonna have those chemistry numbers inaccurate and face Dr. Brigano. We gotta do a refresher.
We need to take it down, we're gonna put it back up.
So you think the jump in kids taking more AP tests, it was like two hundred and fourteen more tests taken this year than last year. That is primarily the research and seminar courses that in the macroeconomics classes that were new offerings?
Yeah, I yeah, I think it, I think it probably is, is mostly that, you know, this was also the cohort, last year seniors was the cohort where we shifted to algebra for. You know, al- algebra for all, um so more students could potentially reach AP calc. Um is another one, so there, you know, but you also see kind of an uptick, colleges still like to see APs on transcripts and there's still that kind of push and and. I I wonder how healthy it is in some cases for, you know, that that's one of those things to go back to what Kaylee was saying before, that, you know, students and. Parents and teachers and counselors all need to like. Connect on what's the appropriate level of rigor for a particular student and. To not, you know, overstretch themselves with taking these APs, but there is pressure around that because colleges do like to see them.
That wasn't the question is, do we have a number on like, on average, how many APs juniors versus seniors are taking?
We can share that with you.
Yeah, I don't have it on on this presentation, but we could, we could certainly pull it up.
You know, the, no, I know it's a lot and I, it's, you know, we wanna balance them having the opportunity to take rigorous classes if they want to with their. Mental health and well being, so it's, how long is a delicate balance in junior year?
But is there such a thing as a class that could still have rigor and not the AP? Yes, we have um, we have um college classes that some of our um juniors are in right now. Um I do wanna also share before we go into the slide that our AP exam results. These are some of the best results that we've had since we've been here. I just wanna acknowledge our high school teachers on the performance of our students and this is with open enrollment.
It's great, I mean, the increase in performance, she was off the charts, awesome. All right, here we, here we go, this is a little.
So yeah.
How does nobody not get a five on calculus, that's.
Well, we have a, so it's interesting you said that, we have a, so you have you have a pathway to AP calculus BC. That is um that begins freshman year. However, um in our recent conversations with the math department, they are exploring. Potential additional AP course offerings in the junior year for students who may not be in that. Math nine honors pathway moving forward and so at the superintendent conference day. They're gonna share uh with us some of their thinking around what potential courses they could offer, which may mean some new AP courses. Available to juniors who want to take that level of math classes, right now there's a a a like a smaller pathway, we want to expand it, so they're working on that as we speak. But yeah, we're usually five all the way around.
Math is one of our strongest departments here, I mean, like.
It did, historically, it is um K through twelve, one of our strongest uh curricular pathways for kids.
Super, it's super strong, it's um, it's, yeah, and there's right, two ways to look at that data, part of it is like celebrated, it's awesome, those kids are, you know, really doing well on that exam and it's a really hard course. And colleges look at that as a proxy for, you know, SAT scores when these SAT optional type college colleges. Um the other question um is, you know, are there other students out there that really would benefit from taking that course that might have be getting threes or fours? And, you know, how do we, how do we find pathways for those students to be able to challenge themselves to take that course, so that's, that's some work that we have ahead of us.
Is chemistry not even on there?
AP chem not?
Chem's not on my list.
Oh, I'm not sure why. Chemistry teachers are gonna be banging at my door tomorrow, my god, all right, I will get you, I will get you AP chem, we're not hiding AP chem, the students do very well in AP chem. But yeah, let me go back to.
Feels intentional out of it.
Well, it's just chemistry, it seems, my goodness, all right, so so. These are the scores, these look much better, what happens, all the, all this data pulls from a giant spreadsheet with tens of thousands of data points and it doesn't take much to. Break one of those connections and it looked like just by the year that was up there, the years that weren't up there. Um that that connection was broken, but it looks like it's been reestablished here, so you can see the um results of those tests. Much better, for sure, but we will, we will double check these. You can have those spreadsheets, we'll double check these and make sure that these are the right numbers. Apologize that they weren't correct initially. All right, let me go forward, I'm just gonna skip through AP, go on to SAT and ACT, here you see the. SAT scores from year to year, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. Kind of holding steady, increasing a bit, um we do see. ACT scores, we've hit that thirty mark. You also see the number of students taking these assessments is going down, many of the universities are holding strong, we are seeing a seeing a small. Group of universities that are kind of pulling back on that test optional, so there are some, especially, you know, really highly competitive. Um universities that now they have some data on when they were testing and what are requiring ACTs and SATs and when they weren't and how those students were doing then in the college and so. Some of them have shifted back, but the vast majority are still um test optional, so but that's a, that's, those are conversations that. Parents and pa- parents and students should have with their counselors if they've got their heart set on. Particular university, if they should be challenging them these tests or not, but those, you can see the numbers. And then we have every year, I share the national merit scholars, semifinalists, finalists, recipients. And I mentioned before, ninety nine percent of the class of twenty twenty five went onto higher education. And we have shared this with the community, but I thought it'd be nice to celebrate these students. Um you can see the commended students up on the top left and then the semifinalists on the right side. The scholarship program on the bottom left and then the scholarship winners on the bottom right, so the the top left, those students. Um scored generally within the top two to three percent of the test takers. Um and then for the national merit semifinalists, those are generally the top one percent. And then once you move from there, there's other parts to the application where you start to, they start to look at extracurriculars and performance in other areas and they both, you know, they start to. Do things other than, they look at things other than just the numbers, but um this is, this is like fantastic, it's really. Um challenging to to get on this list and you can see so many students did, so congratulations to that crew. Somebody from our audience was maybe taking a picture, but we'll post, we'll post this up and we'll, you can make sure you can pull it down, so congratulations.
Put you up there, we'll take a picture with you.
All right, so I think we're we're just kind of wrapping up, I also have the matriculation, um you know, we're we're pretty proud of um the fit, it's not just about the like. Particular college, it's a lot of it is about the fit, colleges, as as many of you know, are just so different in terms of what they offer. Their size, the suburban setting, urban setting, rural setting, you know, et cetera, the different programs that they offer, and so this is um a partial list here. And then this is the rest of the list, the matriculation from twenty twenty five, some highly competitive colleges in a variety of areas here. And then here, I felt like a lot of slides, I just wanted to give you kind of the the bottom line, um systemic success through the organization, you can see it in the results, the elementary ELA trends are really strong. The fifth grade program, we see that real solid increase, middle school ELA trends generally up um across the grades. Math, one through seven, the longer kids are here, the better they do math and that's a, that's a good thing. Um algebra eight continues to be strong, the AP program trends in both number of students participating and also the scores are really strong. And then some areas of focus and we talked about all these things, the English nine, ten in preparation for that regions. Um English seven semester one is something we're gonna dig into a little bit more. Um elementary science, science six, seven, I put up there even, we don't have um science data for six and seven, but I think that that is leading to that, those regions results and we have new curriculum, we adopted Smithsonian. Um so now we're five, six and seven, all Smithsonian science, which I think is like the premier uh middle school science curriculum. Um and then biology and living environment, we just discussed that, so those are kind of areas of focus based on this presentation. So that's my four hundredth slide, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Adam.
Okay, thank you so much. That was a lot and I know there was a lot of work put into that and um we also had a lot of questions. Now we are, that brings us to item number two, committee reports, we're only on number two. Okay, committee reports.
I have the CSF report and I'll be quick, cause I, I'm sure there are people that wanna speak at public comment and wanna go home. So last week, we had our, the first CSF board meeting of the year and they're um very excited to. About the work that they plan to accomplish with the district. And last night, they hosted a very successful mom's night out event in town where they raised well over thirteen thousand dollars. Myself, Dr. Hulukare, Dr. Ackerman, Kaylee, Alyssa, along with um a number of. Building principals attended and it was a great opportunity for socializing and connecting with the community. Um everyone had a wonderful time. Uh looking ahead, they're going to be hosting a dad's day out, so. And everybody else will be hearing about it, I'm sure, um that will be on November sixteenth and um can look out for more details as that date approaches. They asked that I um highlight some opportunities for staff to apply for grants that could help bring more innovative ideas to life in the district. There's Insta grants and these grants fund innovative ideas with a budget of twenty five hundred or less. And the applications for these grants are accepted on a rolling basis throughout the year. And then there's traditional grants, which for projects requiring more than twenty five hundred dollars, um the first part of the application deadline is November fifteenth. And these have historically funded many, uh more valuable um initiatives, including the recent addition of a new musical playground at Roaring Brook. So we encourage the staff to take advantage of these opportunities to enhance the educational experience of our district. And that is my CSF report.
Haven't started yet. Yes, and so at at the executive meeting, I just shared some of our focus areas for this school year. Um that I had shared with the faculty during our opening day presentation and I also uh provided an update for the PTA and our capital project. And um also on different safety and security initiatives that were happening throughout the district.
Yes, and I I um and we also had Dr. Hulukare come and introduce herself because she's new to the district and. And spoke about um all of the wonderful ideas that she has for the the coming year and what she wants to do and how. We're going to partner up with the PTA and in many, many ways. The other thing that I mentioned at that meeting was that I will be inviting other board members to come with me. Um we'll just sort of take turns so that everyone could sort of be a part of um the conversations. That the PTA is having because we we do value um the PTA and they're they're a strong partner to us. Um so that's going to be happening. Okay, any other, no other committee reports? So we will move to public comment, we welcome public comments and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone, after the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among. Themselves regarding comments presented, any public comments? Oh, so no. Oh, so no public comments. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, approvals and ratification. Item 3.1, may I have a motion to accept the minutes of the August 28, 2025 board meeting?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Item 3.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accept the minutes of the September 4, 2025 special board meeting?
I'll move.
May I have a second? All in favor? Okay. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move.
Second?
I will second.
Any discussions, comments, questions?
I have a question. About the contract with Westchester Behavior Analyst. Just right, we'll talk for now. Can you just provide some more detail on the scope of services that they'll be providing and how they align with our current students' needs?
Yes, when it's your contract. Sure. So they are a consultancy group that can provide behavioral consultation services for students, both who maybe require a functional behavior assessment, perhaps a more intensive behavior intervention plan. And they have varied levels of support. You could have a registered behavioral technician, but you could also have an assessment done by a board through a behavioral analyst doctoral level. So it gives us the opportunity to just build our consultancy group if the need arises.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor? Okay, item number five, recommended action. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters, which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools. So we have 5.1, 5.2, the CSC summaries. And then we have some change orders. So it's by, can I, wait, first, is there anybody that wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? 5.1? We can move it? I'll second the motion to move. Okay, so then we will, oh, all in favor?
Sure.
To remove 5.17 to be voted on separately? Okay, all right. Okay, so then we will move items 5.1 through 5.16. 5.16, is that it? Lisa? Okay. We have a motion for 5.1 through 5.16.
I'll move 5.1 through 5.16.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
This is a question for Josh.
Okay, on which one, which item?
Well, in 5.11, 5.11, we, we are talking about technology cards that are no longer useful to the district. And then in 5.6, we talk about an auction company that is going to sell our assets that are obsolete. So why are we not selling the card?
We are selling.
We are selling the cards, okay. So it, that's why, okay? Because it looked like we were just marking them as obsolete and not disposing of them, okay?
Right, right. So the board first marks them as obsolete. And then once they're marked as obsolete, we put them up for auction. Or if there's a better option, to get a better price on it, we can sell it to that organization. The majority of the time, we put any obsolete items on Auctions International to, to sell it. So we're doing that contract. So we'll do that once you declare it obsolete.
So do we do that with all of our items, like textbooks, all that stuff?
Yeah, we do that. There are certain things that we can't sell and that's when we're disposing of it. Right, so you'll see that you'll, you're, you're going to, on the, you're, that, that, you'll first see that it's declared obsolete and then if you're.
Thanks. Anybody else? Anything? All in favor? Okay, can I have a motion to move 5.17? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes its president to execute a settlement agreement regarding the following litigations. CG Home 6 LLC versus Chapua Central School District at all index number 68065-2022 and Friends of Button Hook Forest versus Town of Newcastle Planning Board at all index number 57918-2025 as presented to the board at this meeting. And be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes its president to sign a contract of sale of the school district property known as the Button Hook property comprised of 20.36 acres, tax map designation 81.12-1.8 as presented to the board at this meeting. And be it further resolved, the settlement agreement and contract of sale to Friends of Button Hook Forest as described above shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. I will move that motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments?
Can I third?
Sorry, you can't vote. But we know how you feel.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Great job.
All right, all right. Meeting's over now, just. Item number six, be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085, purchasing and bidding. We have 6.1, can I take the three together? Okay, so we have items 6.1 through 6.3. It's an agreement with 360 Alumni, agreement with Mohawk Mountain House for a board retreat and continuing education contracts for fall 2025. May I have a motion for items 6.1 through 6.3? May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thoughts, comments, questions? All in favor? Okay, seven, facilities. Be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of change orders approved by the superintendent per board resolution adopted at the June 14, 2017 Board of Education meeting? Okay, 7.1. I'm going to ask Josh to explain this again because, yes, we, we know, yes, just.
Yeah, so, so the resolution in June 14, 2017 allowed for the superintendent to sign change orders under a dollar threshold. So she has signed these and you are now acknowledging them.
Okay.
This week doesn't hold up construction.
Yes. May I have a motion for 7.1?
I'll move.
Have a second? All in favor? Eight financials. Okay, we have, can I do them together? Can I have a motion for 8.1 through 8.7? These are acknowledging receipt of the Claims Auditors Report for August 2025, acknowledging receipt of the Treasurer's Report for July 2025, acknowledges receipt of the Appropriation Status Report for July 2025, acknowledged receipt of the Revenue Status Report for July 2025, acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's Report for August 2025, and acknowledges receipt of the Appropriation Status Report for August 2025, and acknowledges receipt of the Revenue Status Report for August 2025. May I, I will move 8.1 through 8.7. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay, that brings us to notice of future meetings. Will be Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, 7:00 PM, right here. Going to be the audit approval. And, and the meeting after that is October 29th, 7:00 PM, which we decided on today that it will stay at 7.